Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our first work session of the year. The first item on the agenda is the 2015 bond issuance calendar. And since our finance director is here, I'm going to turn it over to Bruce.
I can hit the highlights, and then we were thinking that most likely council might want to revisit this next week, and you even have time on the 20th if you wish. Just to summarize the key points on the calendar, we're hoping to introduce an ordinance for the sale of the bond on January 27th, the end of this month. Adopt the ordinance on February 10th, and then approve the resolution at the end of March, March 31st, to issue the bonds in mid-April. The mid-April date's important to us because, as we've done in the past, we've contemplated this bond issue both in last year's budget and this year's budget. We made some equipment and vehicle purchases that have already been approved by council in anticipation of this bond issue, but we have to time the issue in a manner that covers those prior purchases. So, the April 15th target date for the sale of the bond is important. In the memo, we've tried to summarize a project list. Maran council can change and revise this list up through the adoption of the ordinance. So you have time to sort through the projects, and we're not necessarily suggesting today or even next week that you have to finalize the list. The projects on the second page, particularly, I think, for the general fund are going to look familiar to you. Many of these are items we've discussed in the past. The ladder truck replacement for Pioneer Hook and Ladder, dump trucks for Public Works, the fire truck has been bid, and the fire department's evaluating the bid proposals. The dump trucks, some of those are in. The Million Five or the A&amp;E Trail, we talked about that project in November most recently. We've got some other smaller projects that we've listed, and of course, then the $650,000 that we would need as part of our agreement on the MELP project. There were a number, and I, as Michelle and I worked on this, and not suggesting that you need to necessarily include these projects in this bond issue. Right now, in our financial forecasts, we're projecting another bond issue in the spring of 2016, but we at least wanted to mention on the list and kind of just keep those on the radar screen, the potential at some point in the future. And obviously, we haven't discussed it in detail. There's been no Maran council decisions on the Board of Education, Academic Hub, the Maryland Theater, the Professional Court Bridge. Those three are potential bond-funded projects in the future. The one that you might want to consider timing-wise, whether you wish to include in this bond issue, would be the MELP site, future redevelopment, future use. And that's one where, and Rodney can help us if we wish to discuss some kind of park or access to the creek project there, which was one that was at least discussed in concept as a capital improvement project in the current year's budget. That one, you may wish to consider, just in terms of, as you think of priorities and timing for projects, whether you wish to include that one in this bond issue in April. So those are the general fund projects. They total 3.8, well, almost 3.9 out of the total bond of 9.8. You can see other projects then are primarily for the utility funds, City Light, Water, Wastewater. I think most of those projects are ones we discussed as part of our CIP reviews. The roof project at City Light or HLD, the continued replacement of meters in water, that's the primary purchase there. You might recall that staff came in some time ago to talk about improvements at the pelletizing plant and equipment purchases. Those are listed as some of the projects under Wastewater. Mike and Nancy are here if you want more detail on those. So that's an outline of the project list, and you've got some time to work on those. But what our bond council has said to us is that by the time you adopt the ordinance, which on this schedule is February 10th, we should have a finalized list, that we shouldn't change the list after the approval of the ordinance on February 10th. And similar to the past, we would be suggesting this be a general obligation bond issue where we would pledge the full faith and credit of the city as we've done in the past. However, for the utility projects, we would anticipate using revenues derived from the customer service charges for electric, water, and wastewater. So that's at least an introductory overview. I'd be happy to try to answer questions, or we can come back next week when Michelle is here and try to cover it in more detail for you.
Ken, could you expand on this one that I really don't understand? The replacement of 66 windows and seals in the Roslyn Building.
Well, that's the building next door that we own here, and we've really got pretty deteriorated conditions there with the windows. So we thought, and City continues to own the building. Whether we continue to own it or sell it, it's something that's probably needed for an upgrade or stabilization of the building.
There's actually 66 windows in there that need to be replaced.
There's a lot of windows in the Roslyn Building. Yeah, three floors. And that's a project that Eric Deike has started to work on as...
Okay, thank you.
Do we know what we would put in, what staff would recommend putting in if we decided we wanted to do something at MELP and try to anticipate that? Do we have any idea what would be a good number?
Yeah. Rodney, can you help a little bit with that? We did a preliminary estimate last year in the CIP. It was just a rough conceptual estimate.
Exactly. We have a park shown in the CIP if that's what this body wants to do. I think it was like $400,000 or $500,000 to develop a park with a parking lot and then access to the creek. But if we want to do something else, you know, that would have to be decided.
As with the other projects with question marks, I think we're at too early a stage. I mean, most of them, even if now we decided to do something, we won't need the big bucks for quite a while. So I guess I, I don't know. I mean, we could plan a park, have it all done, and know what it's going to cost and include it in the next bond issue, it seems to me. It wouldn't prevent us from moving ahead doing the design.
Right.
Because it would take you a while to do final design. How long would that, do you think?
Six months, probably.
Yeah.
Because we'd need some permits from the state for the access.
To me, we're maybe, as enthusiastic as I was when Rodney brought it, we're approving the money for the trail without seeing anything more than the conceptual, you know, schematics for it. I guess that's the best word I could think of. And I think we want to be proactive. I'm not necessarily against it, but to me, that's, in this list, that's the one where we're going, let's move forward. I think the others, I don't want to get too many bonds out there for things we haven't committed to, don't know if we're going to do, how much it's going to cost. So I guess that one gives me some heartburn, but I could go along with it. I don't know about the rest. I had just a technical question since Rodney's up. Right below the A&amp;E Trail, the fourth one down, major signal intersection upgrade. I was trying to remember, it sounds like it's a specific location. A mast arm pole will be constructed to hang signals over the travel lanes. I was trying to remember where that was.
It's Antietam at Locust, or, I'm sorry, Antietam at Locust.
Antietam at Locust.
I'm sorry.
Is it just that intersection?
Mulberry at Antietam.
Mulberry at Antietam.
The problem with Mulberry is a lot of the signals have, are on mast arms that are over the road. You get to Antietam, and they're on little posts tucked to the side.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's been some accident data there that shows that people weren't seeing the signals.
Yeah.
So that's a possible project that we'd want to do there.
So what I hear you saying, Marty, is that we should keep those question marks, question marks at this point?
That would be my recommendation. I don't think we're far enough down the road to pick and choose amongst those, and I think we're going to need to have serious budget discussions this spring that'll help frame this. Plus, on most of these, there's other discussions going on, you know?
Sure.
So that would be my recommendation. I think it's premature. And I would guess if there were some super reason to do it, we could safely do one earlier than next spring, and it would be well within... Usually, it's no, you know, they don't like it to be any closer than six months, you know? But I don't think we'd have to, but...
Any other thoughts on this from council members?
I generally agree with that. I do think the Academic Hub is very important, but it doesn't look like there's been enough decisions made on the county side or the Board of Education side yet to be talking about putting big amounts of money into that. So it can probably be delayed for at least a year.
Okay. Well, we'll be on our agenda again next week, so we'll be revisiting this with our finance director. Anything else you want to add, Virgil?
I think that's it, so thank you.
Okay. Next item is Memorial Park, Circle of Achievement.
I'll just introduce this, then turn it over to Steve. Last May, the Maran council appointed a group of citizens, three people, I believe, to be our Circle of Achievement Inductee Review Committee, which is the committee that looked at people of our history that would be worthy of being nominated for the Circle of Achievement in our new memorial park. So Steve has worked with the committee, and he's going to report back to us about the initial class they'd like to have us induct, some adjustments they want to make to our criteria that we gave them, and then also a suggestion on the grand opening of the park. So I'll turn it over to Steve.
Thank you. The committee met twice. We anticipate that they'll be meeting once a year, each year, as part of the annual process, but there was a second meeting to basically get the body up and running, learn their roles, and start creating a list of potential candidates. The packet that you received has a list of 10 potential nominees. We've been operating under the understanding that there was funding for eight markers. The committee provided you 10 potential nominees to consider. However, in following that, Rodney said that if this body chooses to, they can find funding for the additional two markers if you just want to adopt the entire list as it stands. The committee, when we did meet, and then off-meeting research, we came up with a database of 43 potential candidates, 36 that are individuals. There's three candidates that are actually pairs of people, which could be worked into the plaque format where their accomplishments are really intertwined and really can't be separated, kind of like Orville and Wilbur Wright kind of situation. There's also four potential nominees that we consider pending nominees based on suggested amendments to the criteria. The committee found that the criteria that the Maran council adopted was, worked quite well in creating high standards, but also casting a wide enough net to have a good pool of candidates. However, they do recommend a couple of tweaks to the standards to accommodate a couple of folks, about four potential nominees, who the committee thought definitely should be on this list, but didn't quite fit within those adopted standards. So part of your packet is recommended minor tweaks to the, to your standards. They would be shown on the copy in your packet under Standards for Induction. Recommended additions are shown in red, strikeouts in a strikeout format, and again, they're again, quite minimal. The committee was also, seeing this will be our first one in the initial induction class, the committee was also asked for its suggestions on how we should go about implementing this. And first thing was, as a date, they were asked, one of suggested recommendation for a date every year to have this, and they recommended the third weekend in May. It's not tied to any particular city anniversary, but they thought, third weekend in May, it's not too hot, it's not too cold, generally, the weather is cooperative, and they use the practical considerations more so than the historical ones in suggesting a date for having the annual ceremony. The, they also recommended one other thing, and that is, not all of the people who, over time, will be inducted onto this memorial, we have images of that we can put on the plaques. The plaques are designed to have an image of the person, and in the vast majority of the cases, we do have that. However, there are a handful of people who, there's just no, no available image. In the adopted standards, Maran council adopted that the city seal would be used. They recommend that it be adjusted to use the profile of Little High School instead. It encompasses more of the overall history of the town. That's a suggestion for y'all to consider. Also, as far as their suggestions, they suggest that if, that the process be set up where, when someone is inducted, there is either a descendant of that person, if they can be found, or someone representing an organization that represents that individual's accomplishments or their principles, essentially, that would accept some sort of plaque consistent to what we would, you would get from like a trophy, trophy company, that encapsulates the plaque on the plaque, and then that way, somebody has something to take away. And we find this in other places, such as using more popular situations like the Baseball Hall of Fame or the Football Hall of Fame. The person being inducted goes away with something, and that can be done with not a whole lot of expense. The first cycle for the eight or 10 will require a little bit of digging to find, see if we can find descendants for these eight or 10 people. In the future, we envision that you'll probably be adopting one, two, maybe three per year in the future. The workload will go way down in future years, it'll be a little bit of effort to round some of that information up, but it's not, not a big deal, and I volunteer to do it on my own time, so. That's all I have. I'm not going to go over the entire list of 10. You have that in your packet. I figures, I don't need to, to call those individually out, but if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
If you want to just mention the names of the committee again?
Oh, yes. The members of the committee are Linda Urban Craig, who is the director of the Washington County Historical Society, John Frye, who's the director of the Western Maryland Room at the Washington County Free Library, and Stephen Recker, who is a local historian who works for Hairock. And he said he might be here today, but I don't see him quite yet, so. But the three members, those are the three members of the committee, and they were appointed to, I believe, five-year terms, and it will run through 2019.
Mr. Munson?
Steve, nice piece of work.
Thanks.
It was really well thought out, and I think will bring in a lot of interest to Hagerstown.
I just have a question about the notes at the very end of the Standards for Induction. Is the review committee not going to make recommendations annually and note that the language was stricken?
It's mostly just stricken because we recommend that, we don't believe that the process really needs to be set up inside of...
In the standard? Okay, that's what I was just trying to clarify.
Yeah. The, you said that you initially thought of eight, and you have a list of 10 here. And I guess when I, when I read them, and I don't, I don't want to pretend to sort of manage the process, is what is written here a description? Is that what you plan to include, or is that just for our...
That's just for the purposes of explaining why they should be. It's not going to be the actual text of the plaque.
And if there wasn't discussion on eight, I didn't find, when you read them and then you read the criteria, I didn't find that, and anybody out there, I don't want to offend anybody, so I don't know these people from Adam, or they're descending family members, but I didn't, I didn't find that Elliot and Douglas, to me, shared the same degree of linkage as the other eight do to achievements associated with a mark on Hagerstown, so that's just my personal opinion. And...
Although Douglas actually was, he was an attorney in Hagerstown after the war?
He was an attorney and a judge, and...
Just doesn't say that in that little capture sheet.
Right. I made that note.
Elliot, though, that, there isn't any mention of his connection to Hagerstown, at least in that...
Elliot was born and raised here. He was raised in the house where Ernie and Aaron and Boyer's law offices are, so he's a native of the city.
It would be nice to see more women, I guess, and to keep in mind, women and minorities, I think, in the future will be. I understand that they didn't have prominent roles back when Hagerstown was founded, but I do think that would be something moving forward to be, to consider the balance of who's being recognized.
It is, it is a balancing act, and there are other women and minorities who are on the list of 43.
The master list.
The master list. It's just that when, in the initial class, the top, who stood out as the top 10 in the eyes of the committee, this is how it kind of sorted out, but there are other women and minorities on the list. One other thing I forgot to mention is, is in your packet, there is a mock-up of a plaque using my rather rudimentary graphic design skills. There is a request into the, to the company that's bidding on this to provide us with an actual mock-up. We weren't able to have that ready for this meeting. My understanding is, however, based on the information that we did provide them to work from, this plaque, as you see here, is a little on the verbose side, so it'll be trimmed back a bit. It's a little too much wordage. So, again, this is just as a general layout, general concept. This would be a relief of the individual's image if we have it, and then the narrative to the side.
Yeah. Because I'm agreeing with you on, I had the same concern about the descriptions of achievement, and to me, they ought to be roughly the same and roughly the same tone. You know, the same size, roughly.
Sure.
And the same tone, and some of these are very long, whereas some of these other people who are more prominent certainly have much more accomplishments than some of the ones that have the longest description here. And that's probably, that's to say, you're trying to explain why these people ought to be in here, I guess.
That's correct. We need to keep in mind that this is not a Hall of Fame, per se, where we're rating people based on how well we know them, because some of these people may have made significant contributions or made significant accomplishments in their lives, but may be relatively obscure and need further fleshing out in this document to explain why they're here.
Right. But nevertheless, on the plaque, I think they ought to be about the same and about the same tone, at least.
Absolutely, yes.
Although Jonathan Hager ought to have at least three paragraphs, but, you know...
We have his own house.
And I agree with Kristen also, that if I had a nine and 10, it would be Elliot and Douglas, and I wonder, since we have a Confederate hero, we ought to wait till next time until we have a Union person, because I don't see a Union person, Civil War person on here, and I don't know why, I prefer to put one side on first. I think we ought to have at least a Union in it, so I would agree with Kristen. Douglas is most known, and I did know that he had a career in Hagerstown after the war, but he's known as, you know, for his very close relationship to the, to Jackson and so on and so forth.
One suggestion I might make on that is, of all of these individuals, Elliot and Douglas are the only military figures on the entire list, and what you might want to consider is Elliot representing the United States first to offset Douglas.
I don't think, I mean, I thought of that, but I don't think the sensitivities run that way.
For me, I was looking for a correlation within the description as it's associated with Hagerstown. I guess that, that's what I was looking for. And maybe I've already asked this question, and I don't have a copy of the list of 43, and I don't know whether this list is supposed to represent sort of, you know, the top of that 43 that you would envision putting in. Burhands is not on the list.
He's on the master list. He has not made, he did not make the initial 10.
Okay. I would disagree with that, and that I would...
Is that a chronological thing, or...
The committee, when they met, they wanted the initial 10 to be spread across the history of the city and not boxed up in, you know, so many in any particular time period of the city's history. They intentionally spread out the nominees over the 200-year history of the city.
Let me ask you this. Are there any Union figures in the next tier?
Yes, there is. Well, there is no, the next tier is the master list.
Okay, but...
But on that master list, there are Union veterans, Admiral Donald McNeil Fairfax. He was an admiral in the Navy during this, during the Civil War, had a significant history. He is on the list. And there's a gentleman by the name of George Fisher, who had a very long military career that began with the Civil War and ended with World War I. He was, but he was a Civil War veteran. Let's see.
How about people your new definition would make eligible? It seems to go out of the way to include, that's civilians I know, but...
Now, the four people who are on that those amendments were designed to account for, none of those are military figures. John Rigdon King was a Civil War figure. He was prominent in that he became the National Commander of the Grand Army of the Republic, which was like the Veterans of Foreign Wars or the American Legion for Civil War veterans. He was a native of Hagerstown, was severely wounded, and throughout his later part of his life, was very active in the Grand Army of the Republic and became its National Commander in 1905.
Is it William O. Wilson? Is he on the list?
William O. Wilson is on the list. He's not a Civil War figure, though he's an Indian Wars figure. He was born about 1867. He received his medal for actions in 1890.
So was the, was part of the goal in selection of the, the names provided associated with a specific period? Like, were you trying to stick to like the late 1700s and early 1800s, or...
No. The, they intentionally tried to spread it out across the entire 200-year period of the city's history. If you walk through the list of 10, you could pretty much connect everywhere from Jonathan Hager establishing the city right up to individuals who lived into the 1960s. So that was part of their, their intent, was this initial list of recommendations to be chronologically more spread out.
Sounds like some people would rather just put all 43 people up right at the start.
Yeah, right. We can talk about this all night.
I don't think we're saying that at all. I just did one addition.
For me, it isn't that. I just think that, and I'll just say plainly, there are nine names on here that I would replace with Winslow Burhands and Heartbeath. That's how I feel about that.
And for Mr. Ashar, also, one of the things, it sounds like your concern was, is their military service connection to the city. When...
No, I don't, I don't, I don't have any concern about that.
Okay, that's, I misunderstood.
No, I raised that. I raised that if we're going to put a Confederate hero in here, there ought to be a Civil War. The Civil War is such a major event. It's not just one military occasion, the War of the... I'd either rather drop Douglas and wait for the next time until it can be paired, or see if the committee wants to recommend, you know, a Civil War figure on the Union side. One of those two would be the way I would prefer to go. I don't know about the rest of the council prefer to go. And again, I've made my comments about how I think the description should come out, but now that I understand the methodology, it's good. And I do have, when we're, if we're done, when we get done with the list, I do have a question about your, one of your recommended new definitions.
If this body wants to pair off Douglas with a Union veteran, there are three on the master list that could be considered, so...
Frankly, I've got no interest in doing that.
Right. I would just rather go with what the committee recommends at this point, and just knowing that those other folks are on the, will be recognized in Memorial Park is good enough for me.
Yeah, me too. The Civil War is of great historic interest and will probably, for another 100 years, be of great historic interest, and we'll be back here next year considering those people.
And if this body would like to, if they want to send direction back to the committee to strongly consider a Union veteran for the next cycle, then we can take care of that within the 12-month period.
By my druthers, I would agree with...
By my druthers, I would agree with the initial statements of Kristen and Martin. I would take eight, and I would leave Elliot and Douglas off, and I would put them in the next round, and I would extremely strongly agree with Councilman Verbaker before. We have a lot of heroes here, and if we're going to do Civil War stuff, I would prefer to see somebody in the Union be there before a Confederate, for a multitude of reasons, including the issues about where Maryland stood in the Civil War, especially Western Maryland and, and West Virginia. And I think the first elevation of a Civil War military person to be one of the Confederate side is not what I'm interested in. And I, I do agree that it should be paired, Union and Confederate. I have no problems with doing them contemporaneously.
Well, then, let's increase it to eleven. Put one on then. I mean, you make a good point.
I mean, I have no problems with that.
I know exactly what your point is.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you know.
But if that's the issue, then let's just make it eleven and put one, Union side one. Let the committee pick one.
You okay with that, Marty?
Yeah, that's what, I mean, that.
Yeah, I'm okay with that also. I don't have a problem.
And, you know, Elliot, he's another military figure, and that's fine. That's fine, just from a different era.
Does that sound like something you can work with, Steve?
Absolutely. I could send out an email. I don't even need to convene the body. I can give them the direction, give them the list of Union veterans, and ask them for their feedback to pick one.
Or if, if anybody has thought of one in the meantime that meets your standards. I mean, you know, I don't know them all. I know there was quite a bit more action here that, that's even been written about since I first came here twenty years ago, that's, you know, new books and new research. So there's a lot of stuff out there.
Absolutely, and we anticipate that over time, the list will develop some more. I think the committee did an excellent job of creating a base, but I'm sure there are people that are, again, we're trying to also highlight obscure people, which may be even a bit obscure to the committee, and we may end, end up adding to it over time.
Yeah, and I think it's a good list myself, so I, basically, fundamentally, just those changes.
And may I suggest, eventually, that, I completely agree with everything that's been done so far, including the criteria and, and the length of death, but, you know, we have a number of living folks around here who probably, I see two Silver Stars as a requirement. We have a number of people that are alive today that I'm aware of that have multiple Silver Stars from either the Vietnam conflict or elsewhere that are not known. People don't know a lot about any of these people because most people who are multiple Silver Star winners don't go out and brag about it. I would love to get some input from living citizens and families in the area of people of that nature that fit into these criteria, that people would think they do, but they're alive and would want their name to be considered in the future. And this is a long-term thing. This doesn't have to be done in the immediate future, but like I said, I know those are the people that fit this criteria but have done it silently, and I think it would be nice to eventually to recognize some of them. Not now, they're still alive. They got, I won't be alive when they're recognized, but if they're not identified, they would never be known.
Well, what we can do is, we can actually expand our list to have a, another category of potential nominees once the, the, the time period.
I think that'd be great.
For their passing, which is adopted into the standards, passes, and then they would roll up onto the list. Because we also, every year, there's going to be people who passed in a certain time period, which would technically then, you know, and this is part of the, the potential of the ongoing developing nature of, of the database.
And I think you guys have done a wonderful job. I would love to see the, the whole list, just because it would be fascinating. I'm sure there are people in there like one here that I never knew about, but I, but I respect who you all have, the committee has selected. I might want to get that list so I can say, no, you need to change it. That wasn't, I think, the concept of what we did here.
Okay. I hate to drag this out anymore, but the Barbara Fritchie Clause, the civilian inclusion, the way it reads, it could be anybody, because it says, "A person as a civilian participated in a significant military event in Hagerstown or elsewhere in such a way that this person showed conspicuous bravery." That's all all right, but it, it could be any person, so it should be any local person, or any Hagerstown person, or any area person, or is it meant to be somebody from somewhere else who did something brave in Hagerstown? I'm, I can, I can read it both ways.
The way this was written was to be both flexible, but also create high standards. So if you, under the, the standards for induction, the first one be, Section 1B residency or relevance. It's intended mostly for individuals who.
Okay.
Who lived here in the city. So, for example, Margaret Greenwald, for whom we named that park about, she, and she's one of the people that this was designed to fit, as we were going through, it's like, well.
That's what I said, the Barbara Fritchie Clause.
Barbara Fritchie. She's our Barbara Fritchie. Now, if Barbara Fritchie, who's known elsewhere for doing something elsewhere, happened to live in Hagerstown, technically that would qualify her here as well. So like I said, it was designed to be flexible.
Okay.
Excuse me, flexible, but also have quite high standards.
You got the qualifiers in the general.
The qualifiers somewhere else is what you're saying.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Still read two ways to me.
Now, if somebody just came into town and did something and left and didn't live here at any time, they wouldn't, well.
They don't qualify.
They do not qualify.
So, so some soldier did something gallant, passing through, but was from Vermont or Alabama, that doesn't.
That does not qualify.
Qualify. That's what I was.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, everyone.
So we'll come back with an eleventh name.
And that would be approved eventually in a regular session, in a voting session, along with the changes to the standards.
Yes, two, two different items.
Would you be okay with May, what was the date, Steve? Uh, third weekend in May, the weekend before Memorial Day weekend. That's what we can dedicate the park.
Just curious, I mean, is there a reason, did you all think about doing it one Memorial Day weekend? What would be Memorial Day?
The thought was that Memorial Day being that it is a, a holiday to honor military people, we thought there might be negative reaction from that.
Good answer.
That's what I assumed.
No, that's, that's, that's fine.
Why you avoided that weekend?
Yeah.
That just answers the question.
And would you care for copies of the master list? We can get them too.
I'd be curious to see it, too.
Okay.
Might be opening up Pandora's Box here.
Well, no, I, again, I, I think we're all respecting the decision of the committee. I think it just would be a fascinating thing to see this. I think it's, want to see a lot of things that we don't know about.
Right, and folks will stay on the list indefinitely, so everybody who was on this master list, who didn't get, not inducted this year, are up for reconsideration on the master list next year, so. And when you see that list, it's amazing what people have accomplished here that lost, lost the history. It's the right thing, I think, that you're all doing.
And, you know, we may want to do something with the master list. When, when you think about what you all are saying, that we have all these people that many of us don't know about, and the fact that they haven't made it that far yet doesn't mean they may not get some type of other recognition, we will see.
It'd be cheap to put them on the web.
And, well, it'd be a good thought process for the committee to tell us if, if you have any recommendations, what we should do with people that are on the list but haven't made the cut yet, because we only have so many people we can do it at times. And I think Burhands is a great example. There's nobody who would say no to Winslow Burhands, but there's all these other people, too.
Good work. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thanks, Steve.
Next up is the proposed revisions to Chapter 216.
Jim's here to help me with this one. In November, when we were talking about the street overlay and pavement preservation, there were several concerns raised by the council regarding specifically utility cuts and how we regulate the repair of utility cuts. They're inevitable. We try to minimize them, but then how they restore our street is really the issue, I think, here at hand tonight. So we just wanted to start the conversation on this, and what ultimately we need to do is make changes to Chapter 216 of the city code, specifically the part about utility excavations and restoration of the street. That section of the code hasn't been looked at in fifteen years, so it's a good time to revisit this. So Jim's going to give you some of the ideas that we have on how we can maybe improve the program. We also want to hear if we're missing anything, and ultimately we'll come back with a change to 216, so.
From the discussion a month ago or so, during the review of the pavement preservation, I think there were three or maybe four key issues that the council brought up, or key points that they wanted us to consider. One of them was the appearance and condition of these streets after the utility work is, is completed. Another was the length of time and the amount of disruption that the residents had to endure while the work was being performed. And then also, the question of, you know, with all this disruption to our streets, is the city charging enough money to these utility companies to cover our loss and investment by having damage to the streets? And so we went back through Chapter 216, the section that actually lays out the regulations for street cutting, and thought about these three main areas, and I guess we came up with three or four proposed changes to what's in Chapter 216 right now, hopefully to address some of those concerns. The process now is if a, a utility company or someone wants to cut a street, they need to file an application with our office. It needs to be reviewed and approved, and through that permit, they're bound to follow the conditions that are in Chapter 216 and to use the city's standards when they patch the street or go back to restore. And they, they do do that. They do follow our standards, but in certain cases, as we found out over the past year or two, they may follow our standards, but the, the finished product may not be exactly what we want. So one of the, one of the key things, I think, and one of the things that we've noticed and has caused a lot of concern, is a good example would be North Mulberry Street. Councilmember Noddy is very familiar with that. Last year, Columbia Gas did a, a gas main replacement for several blocks on North Mulberry Street and adjoining streets. They replaced the gas main, and then with that, at each house on either side, they had to make cuts to get the, the service lines over to the houses. And what you end up with then is a long, continuous trench along one side of the street, and then you have all these transverse trenches that you, as you go up at each house, you have one of those. Under the current standards, the way they restored that street met our requirements, because our requirement said, on those transverse patches, if they're more than ten feet apart, you don't need to combine them. You can just treat them as individual trenches, patch them, and, and that, that meets our standards. What we would propose for a situation like that is to increase that distance from a ten-foot separation to a seventy-five-foot separation. So you would get in a situation like on North Mulberry where they're making cuts at regular intervals to serve on either side. If two of those cuts are closer together than seventy-five feet, they need to basically mill and overlay that whole section in between those trenches. And in the case of North Mulberry, for the work that was done there, they would have milled and overlaid the entire length of.
Right.
Where they put the main in. The seventy-five feet may seem a little arbitrary in some ways. We looked around a little bit, what other communities would, how they regulate it. We sort of settled on seventy-five feet for two reasons. One is, in most neighborhoods, the Mulberry neighborhood, but even, even further in the north end, the spacing of the houses, a lot of the lots in Hagerstown are in the range of seventy, eighty feet wide in some neighborhoods, you know, other neighborhoods are closer. In most neighborhoods, that seventy-five feet would still kick in and catch, like a main replacement with all these ladders, would still catch, in most cases, those streets and force an overlay of it. There are going to be some neighborhoods, maybe in the north end, with huge lots where you may not meet that seventy-five-foot criteria, but the other part of the seventy-five foot is just, thinking about it, you notice those trenches most when you're, when you're driving over them. And at seventy-five feet apart, if everybody follows the posted speed limit of twenty-five miles an hour, you'd be hitting those trenches once every two seconds, you know, which we thought is not great, but that's, that's somewhat reasonable. It's, it's better than what's on, what's on some of the streets now. So that would be one recommendation or, or one consideration. Along with that, to address the length of time that these construction activities take and how long it takes for them to get finished and get the road restored. Right now, the city standard is, if, if a street is cut, the pavement is cut, the, the backfill or the repair of that is a two-step process. They actually have to put in a layer of concrete, about ten inches of concrete down below the surface, let that cure and set up, and then they come back and put a, a bituminous or asphalt patch on top of that, so that the, the road surface, you just see asphalt. But in most of these utility cuts, two inches below that, there's a, a layer of concrete. That patching system works pretty well. The problem with it is, it extends the length of time that these repairs take, because contractors have to, they dig the trench and then they install the concrete. Then they have to wait several days for the concrete to cure before they can do anything else, which means they need to bring steel plates out and cover those trenches with steel plates for those days. Then they have to take the, the plates off after a couple of days, then they have to do the, the asphalt on top. It's two different construction operations. It just extends the length of time that they're, they're using to repair it. So what we would propose is changing our preference. Our, the preference right now is to use that concrete and bituminous patch. We would change it to another standard that we have in the city, which is just a straight bituminous patch, a very thick asphalt patch that goes in, no concrete. What that would allow is a much quicker final restoration of the trench, because you're dealing with one material. You don't need to wait days for the concrete to set up. You can, you could essentially backfill a trench within a, a day, you know, both the, the lower layers and the upper layers, get the street opened up more quickly, not have the need so much for steel plates that are, you know, can, can rattle and cause noise or be a hindrance to, to travel. So that would be, you know, another possible consideration, something we can do to speed up the, the pain or speed, or lessen the length of pain when this construction activity is going on. On the third point, as far as whether or not we are charging enough to these utility companies for the way they're reading our streets.
Could I ask you about the point that you just mentioned? Not, not the third point, second point.
Sure.
If you use, what'd you call it, the bituminous method?
Yes.
Is that going to allow, is that method permit additional sinking as, that you wouldn't get if you had the concrete in there? Is that a problem?
It's, it's something, it's a potential problem, and we, we actually debated that a good bit when we were, when we were reviewing this item, trying to, I think that was the preference all the, all these years of using concrete, because it, it gave you sort of a factor of safety, that even if they didn't get everything compacted under it as well as they should have, that concrete would, would form a stable base and probably was less likely to sink. Now, if we're going to an all asphalt or bituminous patch, then the, the compaction of the, the stone or the backfill dirt under that is going to be much more important. They're going to have to do a much better job, a more thorough job of compacting any of that stuff that's in the trench before they put this bituminous material in.
But they have that.
And how do we know they've done that?
We have monitored that with our, we have two construction inspectors, and we can also have materials testing done over the back.
And if I can ask, along that line, I wonder, as I drive over it, were these patches done to these kinds of specs or because of the impending overlay next year, and I'm talking about specifically North Mulberry, essentially from Pangborn and then to East Urban to Millie, and they're all for the overlay next year, right?
That's right.
Now, when I drive over those particular lateral patches, they have sunk dramatically compared to what I'm used to.
Right.
And, and I'm wondering, were those patches done differently because of the impending overlay that's going to happen, or were they actually concrete in? Because if, if you drive over those, they dip, and, and if we're having those kinds of dips with concrete right now, I can tell you, I would be much happier with an extra day or two of steel plates and everything and not having that problem, because I understand you also have the one-year warranty period here, which is, which would be essential, but if the answer is that they're going to have to come back and redo it, it, it's going to be worse than what we have now.
It depends. The ones on North Mulberry should be. It depends. The ones on North Mulberry should be, should have been the permanent concrete patches. The ones further north where they just recently did work, there's a decent chance that the patches there were not finalized. It may just still be temporary patching material that isn't as strong and is more likely to cause dips. It's going to depend on the location to see exactly which one it is.
That's the area I'm talking about, specifically between Pangborn and Millie, I guess. Yeah, that's Mulberry Avenue.
Yeah, that's Mulberry, but it's that particular section.
But I know what you're talking about. But I want to tell you, Lou, whether it's permanent, which it is, on ours, it's an absolute horror.
Oh, oh.
You know, I mean, it really, it doesn't matter, and ours is finished.
I understand.
I mean, I'll be long dead and gone.
But the question becomes, is it going to be?
I know.
Is it going to be worse if we don't require the concrete?
Right.
And on the long, you know, these, this whole gas company thing has been, as far as I've lived here 62 years, and this is a once-in-a-lifetime thing for me to see the amount that they've done. And they stored steel plates right in front of my house for two or three weeks.
Yep.
For, I guess it's easier just to stack 10 plates up in front of somebody's house than take them and store them where they should be having. And I only say that so people know I was also inconvenienced. But I'd rather have that inconvenience than spend the next 10 years going like that.
That's right.
That's, it's having to be very cautious.
First, we got to find out if they're the permanent patch, or if they're the temporary patch that they do before their work is completely finished.
Right.
And so, we'll have to find that out first, to answer your question. The one problem with concrete patches is that they, it's a different material from the asphalt, so sometimes they move differently. And a good example of that is on Potomac Street, is you're going, like down where the community garden's going to be, there's a lot of patches down through there. You feel every one of them because the pavement, I think, has moved slightly differently than the concrete patch and is made a bum-bum-bum-bum.
Well, the easy thing for people like us to do is say, you guys are the experts. And if you think this is the way to go, then that's what I would do.
I think asphalt is the way to go if it's done well, and if it's done properly. And that's going to be on us to make sure that happens.
Can you inspect the compaction that's initially done before you put the asphalt in?
Yes.
Can you inspect that and make sure it's adequate?
It would basically be a test of the compaction level, and that, there is a way of doing that, yes.
And that would be anticipated to be done where you have these bituminous patches?
I can't sit here and tell you that we would do every one, but if we would have a major line replacement, I think we would have several of those done.
Ronnie, is this, is an example of this, of the cores that I saw them removing from the street right after doing Linden, when they came back the next day and?
Yeah.
Took out about four or five boards and watched them take them out?
That's a type of compaction test on the actual asphalt, where they can take that and determine if it was compacted properly.
Now, who tests that? Them or the city?
We both do.
Okay.
And then we compare results. And if their compaction is not up to specification, then we deduct their payment a percentage depending on what the compaction is lacking.
Okay.
So it's all set up in the state highway specification. What we're talking about here is the compaction of the stone and the soil below.
Gotcha.
And that's similar, but a slightly different test.
One of the, I know when I worked for Middletown, one of the offerings that we provided in these standards to address some of the issues in the duration between fill and final patch or final paving was a requirement that when a contractor had to correct, and even the municipality itself had to correct the infrastructure below grade, that they would fill in and then they would mill an area larger than the trench opening and set the plate flush. And that decreased the, you know, I guess the ire of the citizens to having to drive over it several days. And I think the state standard is if you are approaching the plate at a perpendicular course of travel, that it has to be cold patched. I don't recall the utilities doing the work on Wilson, doing that at every stretch of that process. So I think that one of those two have to be specified in this document. My preference, obviously, is that you mill around and you sink the plate because then, once your patch is in, and you put your two inches back on top, you've then created that extra seam, if you will, you know what I mean, outside of the trunched area, which I think decreases that degradation that you get. And then the other thing is what I noticed last night on South Potomac was, in fact, there's one on Locust where it looks like some of the recent patches aren't sealed. And so, those, I think, are two criteria that have to be in here. One is the flush plate, and the other is that the patch has to be sealed. Because I think those are the two things that are going to cause the degradation, especially in your streets that are less than five years old. You know, you've basically wasted paving if those two things don't happen, to tie in that seam.
I don't think that's any problem.
No.
And then I think people won't mind as much that the plate's there for more than, you know, a couple of days. And it gives the opportunity for the concrete to cure, you know what I mean, without that disruption.
Well, I guess what we're proposing is they wouldn't use concrete as often, but they'd still use plates occasionally when there's an exit.
Yeah, and I'm just giving them the option that if they're not going to, if they're going to go the single route without the plate, you know what I mean, that they do the wider area, and if they are going to use the plate, that it be flush, you know what I mean? So that it sort of gives them the option of, do you want to do the plate option and take more days, or do you want to do it all at once and?
Recession.
Yeah.
We'll work that in.
I guess the other thing that we presented in the memo are the fees that we're currently charging. It's graded based on how big a disturbance it is and how old the pavement is that they're cutting, how old the street is. You know, new, freshly paved streets, if we allow them to cut them, it costs them more to do that than it does streets that were paved seven or eight years ago, just because we think we're not losing our investment quite as much. And what we're proposing in this table is an increase on almost all of the fees in there, particularly some bigger increases on cuts that are made in streets that are more recent, of more recent vintage, have been paved more recently. We felt that we aren't charging enough on those. We've got streets that were paved in the last year or two where we've got street cuts and we don't feel we're adequately charging the utilities for those.
And I think on this chart, so that we're not accused of being business unfriendly, is to recognize that I believe that our schedule runs on a three-year basis. Is that right?
We have two years of approval set in a third year.
And so, my recommendation as a compromise to those utilities would be instead of zero to five, it'd be zero to three. Because we're able to hold up a document and say we have three years' worth of data-driven, you know, knowledge. And if the impetus, which it appears to be here, is to give a credit of the 50%, then we should be able to say, hey, we had this list for you, you know, it has a three-year out window, and that's what the credit, you know what I mean, should be accounted for, is the knowledge of that list existing. And even by doing that, if you look at your changes, if your fourth and fifth year, which you're losing, if you will, or you're being, you know, business friendly to lose, is going to be the rate that it is now, so, you know what I mean, it isn't going to be any different. That's one compromise that I would offer.
I think that's fine.
I don't have a problem with that. And I like the idea of milling beyond the cut as one option, because it does, seems to me, gives a better transition to the existing pavement when you.
I think state highway standards, now you've got to mill 18 inches over.
Yeah, I think that's a good one.
Tie that seam.
Ours is 12 inches. So if the original excavation's like the size of my piece of paper, the repair is actually a foot beyond that.
Oh, okay.
To give you that transition.
Okay. Of course, state highway, if they get away with it, they'll ask you to do the whole thing.
Yeah. We're not quite there yet.
State highway, you got to build a hole in the intersection.
Yeah.
Are we going to do the warranty?
Well, the fourth thing in there is a warranty period. Currently, well, under our regulations, there's not a warranty requirement in our specifications. What we do is, we do a final inspection of the repair, basically sign off on it, and then that removes the obligation of the utility contractor. Although, there are some cases where it's been so obvious that we have gone back to the utility companies and you need to, this trench obviously sank, you need to come in and repair it, and they have. But we thought it would be a good idea, especially if we're going to consider the all bituminous patch, that there is some warranty provision in there. So that if it turns out that these bituminous patches don't hold up as well, we do have something in the code that says, you know, at least within that first year, the utility is responsible for going back and trying to fix it.
Is the year enough, and do you have a tickler system to catch it? I mean, I say is the year enough because I watched in my neighborhood, brand-new street, and the curbs and the sidewalks, there were a three-year period deteriorating, you know. It's one year, there's things that didn't even show up in one year. And then you walk the same thing two years later, and smalling and everything else.
We don't necessarily have a tickler system that will automatically tell us one year is up on these permits. We do have a system that lets us know when these permits are issued, and we can manually check, or we can filter it to let us know what permits were done a year ago, you know, so that we would have a listing. I probably would envision this as much, though, as keeping that list and actually driving all these locations, you know, toward the end of a year.
Well, that's some time.
Yeah.
Some time. Physically going out there after a year.
I mean, you're right. We don't have that system set up right now.
It's on a warranty period right now.
Right.
But I'm just saying, we ought to do it.
Yeah.
I think we have the capability to do that with our.
Is a year, why are we picking a year?
Well, I think a year would be a minimum. I think that what we've seen is, it's always good to look, to let these patches go through a full year, especially a winter, in a freeze-thaw cycle, to see how they're going to hold up. Now, I think generally, we'd say, if you're going to see a problem with one of these patches, you're going to see it within that first year. You're going to see it actually fairly quickly, I think. You can tell that they're not going to hold up. I guess we could consider extending that to a longer period of time, longer than the year. But I guess our, my feeling at least, is within that first year, you're going to know whether or not that trench is going to be a problem.
Did you see what other communities do with that?
None of that. A lot of them just do, as we do now, a final inspection without a warranty period or a bond.
Well, I guess we could try a year and see how it's working out. And then, because at least you get one full-season thing, because I was thinking longer, not shorter.
Right.
Again, watching the actual process and where I live, you know.
What do you do on a new road when you accept it?
For the construction, the.
Like a new road and a new subdivision.
So, it's equivalent.
Okay.
Sounds like we're good then with these four changes for cutting streets.
And we can bring it back, Roddy, maybe on the 20th, just to do this again.
Yeah, we'll bring up the changes to 216.
There's a couple other changes.
We have these four, a few others that were suggested here, we'll get those worked into. But that's very helpful.
How does everyone feel about putting your trash can out to reserve your parking space after you dig it out from snow? Do you want to make that illegal in Hagerstown?
Yes.
I don't.
Well, I thought that it already was.
It's not.
I know.
I thought it was.
But they, honestly, because anybody who's ever tried, it's like, oh.
Well, listen.
Of course, it's chairs where I live.
This, however, came to traffic and parking not for that reason, and that's important to understand. Because I think a lot of us have sympathy when there's a two-foot snowfall and somebody spends all day digging out.
And I don't think that would be, even if we did make it illegal, I don't think after a snowstorm, we'd send the police out to the course.
We have areas in the city, by way of example, where a single-family home resident will have five automobiles. And there's limited on-street parking. So when they leave, on a regular, normal day, they take and put something on the street so nobody can park there.
Yeah.
And it's not illegal. So, our police officers indicate what they do. If they see it, they just stop and move it off. But nobody can tell that individual, you can't do it. You say, why can't I do it? It's not illegal.
Well, I could go and take that person's trash can because it's abandoned property.
Well, it's all, that's a debatable issue.
Well, yeah.
The simple fact is, though, we don't have a mechanism, when a citizen complains, to say that we can do anything about it, and.
Other than tell them to steal that person's piece of property.
Well, and you're right, Mayor, and what does that do? And what we want to avoid is confrontation that occurs when the neighbor comes out to take the chair and the person who put it out says, uh-uh. So, if it's made illegal, they have something to stand on. But right now, there's nothing illegal about putting that out there.
Any other thoughts on that?
I thought it was illegal.
Sounds reasonable.
Some jurisdictions that make that illegal also provide a provision, then within their code, that.
Abandoned?
No, is a requirement for removal of snow. In other words, let's say you've got, I'll use Mitchell Avenue because I lived there for a good time and can remember digging out the car 100 times there. But if, let's say that there's 10 folks that have dug their car out, two-foot snow. Two days later, there's somebody that hasn't dug their car out, comes out and just moves their car down two spots.
Right.
And didn't make any effort to dig theirs out. There are some jurisdictions that will say you have to dig your car out of the public space within X amount of hours, just like you got to clear your sidewalk so that you avoid somebody saying, oh, well, thanks for digging out a spot, two spots down, I'm just going to move my car down two spots. And now, I'll go dig the spot out that I didn't move from.
We'll never be able to regulate common courtesy.
I understand.
But I would recommend that we, as staff and our attorney, come up with a reasonable, just so it's illegal. I mean, nobody needs to be thrown in jail or anything, but there has to be a language so somebody can say, no, you can't do that.
Right.
Councilman Metzger's right, we're going to.
On second thought, why should I be denied a parking place in front of my house when I want to haul my kids, if I had kids that age, to the Mummers Day Parade so they could be in it? But when I get back, everybody has parked in my neighborhood, so there's no parking available to me when I get back to my house.
Well, I think the answer, that council member, is like with so many other ordinances and laws that we have on the books, that our police use common sense to enforce. So, just like I don't see our police officers spending a lot of time enforcing this law with the two-and-a-half-foot snow, I don't see them enforcing it in the realm you're talking about. I see that this has come to traffic and parking because of regular, every day, I'm putting stuff on this so I can reserve, so I have five spaces for my cars, and the neighbors, they can go find somewhere else to park. And that's what this is all about. I mean, I agree with you, and it's just like our curfew. I mean, if we really expected our police officers to enforce that curfew law on every single violation they saw, they wouldn't be doing anything but enforce the curfew laws. We have a 48-hour parking ban. You can't leave a car parked for more than 48 hours in the city in any one spot. We know that the only time that's ever enforced, if there's a complaint made and then it's confirmed. And this is going to be the same thing. It's going to be complaint-driven in areas where people are doing it on a chronic basis.
Right.
Okay, well, I'm certainly willing to take a look at that, but.
So we'll have the staff and attorneys work on some language.
Yeah, we'll come back and bring it back. Or the traffic and parking's going to process it, and then we'll bring it back, whatever they decide.
But I think.
When they're doing that, would you mind having somebody to look at the handicap signs that are around, that they're no longer in use? I'm just tired of calling and they have not pulled it, getting pulled out.
Henry, you're absolutely right. I did the same thing.
I mean, I've got handicap signs. People call me, look, your person hasn't lived here for two years, three years.
Oh, yeah.
And there they are, and still, and it's, is it the state?
Me, too.
Who is it?
Me, too.
When Tim calls, Tim calls because Tim has to get the approval to take out.
Yep.
I have one lady that was over on Potomac, she's down at Brooks Building, and she's been there for now three years, and it's still over there on Potomac Avenue.
Yeah, if we need to ask the state expert to fix this, you know, what is it we need to do, or how do we need to address this?
I think a wrench works.
Yeah.
Is the city engineer good with a wrench?
Wasn't he just warning us about vigilante tactics?
I mean, you verify it, it's not needed.
Mr. Vigilante. Mr. Vigilante.
I'll have to look into that. I'm not sure what the mechanism is to get them taken out. Obviously, when someone doesn't need any more and they call the state, then we get a letter and we take them out.
You get a letter from the state.
Most people don't call. It just goes on and on.
Yeah, nobody calls it.
At least the, the handicap signs have an expiration thing marked on them. So people try, they'll eventually get caught, you know, on cars that they hang on the dashboard. They have expirations on them.
The ones on.
But the ones on the street, they're just there.
The ones on the street, they're just there.
I know, I know, they're just there. That's the difference.
And then we have other people who have handicap placards that will move into the area, but it does not correspond with what they have in their car, but they feel they have the right to do that because they have a handicap sign.
Yeah, I don't think that's true.
I know it's not true, but I'm just telling you, this is the complaints that I get.
The placards have an expiration date. Somebody has to look and say, that thing's 10 years old, you know.
Speaking of sidewalks and paving, the paving that was just done on South Potomac and the sidewalk that was redone, that the, the metal grates for the drains from the, you know, spouting drains, drains down to the sidewalk, they're on South Potomac, and then drains out to the street. There are some of them where they put the drains through the sidewalk, and that's it.
So they didn't finish the curb?
No, it drains into the grass strip that's before the curb. So it dead ends.
Through the sidewalk, not through the curb.
There you go. It stops at the end of the sidewalk. I noticed that. Before we moved on to the next item, I wanted.
Thanks for following up on those items.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Very good job.
Yeah. Thanks for getting back so quickly on that. That was good.
Yeah. Next item on our agenda is the Mount Ned and Farms and Professional Court Bridge project overview.
I guess before I start, I recognize Rob Slocum and Scott Hobbs are both here from Washington County, and they're terrific peers of mine to work with, and they're here because we've been having several conversations about this project. And I guess I'll start out by referring you to the map that I put in your packet because I think it helps orient you in this discussion. Let me just give you some background information. But ultimately, the question here tonight is, what will our ultimate participation be in the reconstruction of Professional Court? Let me give you some background first. First off, the project in red on the map is under construction. The county staff has that already bid, and it's under construction, and that work will be completed in the summer of 2016. And what that does is it, as you can see, it connects Yale Drive, kind of at that sharp turn when you go out to the hospital, connects Yale Drive over to HCC, and constructs the roundabout, the red dot in the, I guess actually, there's two roundabouts that are part of that construction. That is all underway. It also starts that, a little bit of a leg that goes back towards Professional Court in red there, that is also part of that contract. So that much is underway. The other thing that they have underway is the design of the portion of the road that is in pink. And a year ago, almost to the day, Rob and I came in here and you, we reviewed the project with the mayor and council, and you endorsed that we would work with them on the design. Since it's all the complications of the funding, they've had to go through the process, they've had to put out an RFP, and they've worked through the process, and they've hired RK&amp;K engineers to do the design. The initial kickoff meeting for that was held in December, and now here after the first year, the, the work's going to begin in earnest. And that's for the pink or the purple, whatever you want to call that portion. It's going to take over two years to do the design work, because one of the main elements of that piece is the bridge crossing of the Antietam Creek, which is a bridge that's almost 400 feet long. It spans the wetlands and the floodplain of the Antietam Creek. And there's a lot involved in that, a lot of permitting that's involved, and it just takes a lot of time to work through all those details. So the construction of that portion, if the money was already available and ready to go, is still several years away. But it's not too early, I don't think, for us to start talking about how we envision this project coming together, because a portion of that pink is within the city limits. The orange line that is basically on top of the Antietam Creek is the current corporate limits. Everything to the left where it says Professional Court is already in the city limits, and that road will go from probably 1,000 vehicles a day that's out there now, to almost 15,000 vehicles a day once that road is built. So that, it needs to be rebuilt, reconstructed. It was never built to be for that kind of vehicle load. So it needs to probably be widened to four lanes. The traffic study will bear out, but the initial traffic studies that we did a few years ago showed that it's probably going to be four lanes. It'll look something like what Northern Avenue does now. And it, the pavement will also have to be reconstructed to bear that much traffic. So there's a cost there. There'll probably be some changes at the intersection of Eastern Boulevard. Specifically, if you think about heading south towards the dual highway and you want to make a left turn onto Professional Court, that's going to be an extremely heavy movement. And the left-turn lane that's there now is probably, is not going to be adequate. When we widened Eastern Boulevard, we set it up so it could be, that left-turn lane could be lengthened to get it up to around 200, 250 feet, which will help a lot. But that's going to be a very heavy turn going in there. So we have to monitor that to make sure that that would be adequate. So there's some improvements that need made on Eastern, and obviously, the improvements need made on existing Professional Court. So ultimately, as they begin the design, we talked about what standards the road would be built to. And initially, that was a concern, whether it be city versus county. It seems like now, and the gentleman from the county can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's probably a lot of this is going to be built to state standards because the state funding is involved, and that's what they require. So I'm not sure that's really so much an issue anymore. But ultimately, the, as the design progresses, they'll want to separate the design into various contracts, whether it be a, a contract for just the bridge, and then a contract for the approaches. Those kind of things have to be worked out. And if the portion of the road construction that's in the city is going to be a city project, we have certain boilerplate and construction standards that we would follow as well. So at some point, those decisions have to be made about how that's going to be separated. But the main question, I guess, really I have is, to start the conversation, is, will the city participate in the construction funding of that reconstruction of Professional Court? And if we will, is there, what's the caveats for that? Or, I guess the other way of doing this would be to just simply treat the project as we would a developer, and basically, issue them a permit to widen our street and tell them to follow, you know, we review the plans, and we treat it like a developer, and they would, they would pay for it and construct it, and we would just do it under permit. That would be the other extreme.
And the developer would basically be chief, is that right?
Well. I mean. Chief, the county, whoever is building the road.
Why would we not do that? And I, I guess, to me, I have, to me, an essential question that has to be part of this project is the county's portion of Eastern Boulevard. For this project to go forward and the county not finish their portion of Eastern Boulevard, it doesn't solve any problems at all. It just creates more of a mess. And I, I've said this before, people laugh at me, but if the county isn't going to complete Eastern Boulevard before this is open, I still think Professional, Professional Court, as it exists now, should be one-way. And I, and I understand it could be a dead end there, they couldn't cross, they'd have to make that whole thing one-way. But if you're going to have 15, 7,000 cars cutting across, making a right-hand turn on the Eastern Boulevard, they're going to end up backing the whole way up to the dual highway. Exactly. The only reason Professional Court is essential, that bridge to this city is for traffic. And if Eastern Boulevard is not completed, it does nothing for the city at all. So personally, unless they, there is some guarantee that the Eastern Boulevard connection is going to be accomplished by the time this bridge is open, I can't imagine us contributing any money to it myself. That's my own opinion. Unless somebody's going to explain to me how it doesn't just create an absolute fiasco on Eastern Boulevard in the city. Right now, it backs up the Opel Court at rush hour.
If I can understand a little bit better the color process here.
Right on the red, it says Yale Drive, Phase 1, under construction. I mean, it's physically being constructed right now.
Yes.
Are there utilities being included in that construction? Are water lines, are sewer lines being run as part of the construction of that road right now?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Yes. Why is he using?
In any development, when the development occurs, in, it really doesn't matter whether a lot gets platted first, or, you know what I mean, or, or the grading happens, you know what I mean, or the utilities get installed, you know, there's the timeframe for each of it. And I still think this gets back to, to, to the political discussion of annexation that we had a couple of weeks ago. Have any of these properties submitted paperwork to proceed through the city's annexation process to date?
Any of the properties, like the chief property?
Yeah.
Not that I know of.
So, in any typical development, housing development, let's take a private housing development. Would a private housing development have gotten to this point in the construction process without proceeding through the annexation, the city's annexation process, to be installing utility lines that I'm assuming, that all parties are assuming are going to connect to, to the city's existing utility system? And I'm assuming the answer to that is, is no.
They wouldn't have to until they connect.
Well, I guess that's my question is, and I, and I, you know, I try and, you know, not, not use the term political that often, but I mean, this seems to be a bit of a political discussion that has to be had. I mean, at some point, some party is going to subdivide a lot off of this road and want to connect these utilities. And because we are, we are governmental entities negotiating this process with a quasi-private entity that is sort of operating on, you know, the, the partnering direction of a governmental entity, that's going to have to be answered. And so when you ask me, Steph, you know, what level of participation should we have, it seems to me that it's this political question of, is it going to be developed to county or city standards? Any part of this road, or pieces of it? And, and to me, that isn't as important, because you've already got generally a design of sidewalks and, you know, pedestrian, you know, and, and travel with, and things like that, that I think generally meet one or either party's standard. But I'm not familiar with any development we've allowed to move forward in the actual construction process of installing utilities that are expected and assumed to be connected to the city's system.
We don't have.
Without first proceeding through an annexation.
But we can't control that.
I'm, I'm, I'm not saying we control that part. What I'm saying is, that question, before we talk about, you know, what degree we're going to participate in this, has to be answered. And I'm assuming at some point, somebody's going to say, hey, here's a piece of the process that I think you need to go through, private developer, and get an answer to as part of that development process.
Well, and I've suggested, Kristen, and I suggest here, that we, that we have a meet with, with Greg Snook about those plans. There's lots of issues to discuss with that, clearly.
I mean, I'm assuming as part of this pink road that gets laid, let's say, let's call it Phase 2, I'm assuming folks aren't going to, to actually physically construct this road and put in water and sewer utility lines, and simply assume that at the end of that construction effort, they turn on the lines and they're automatically accepted into the system without.
Well, if they signed a pre-annexation agreement, they would.
But nobody's gone through that process.
But they know they have to. I mean, it's no secret.
But we're actually physically seeing construction of utilities that are assuming that now, and that process hasn't even started.
Not that I know of.
That, that just to me seems, seems odd.
But with whom would you have a pre-annexation agreement?
You've got to have with the city. I mean, the city says.
I mean, he's the other side.
Who's on the other side.
Whoever's building this, whoever's building this, this property. I'm assuming that, that there's some entity, and like I said, I don't care whether it's a governmental entity or not, it'd be no different than if the county weren't to go out tomorrow and, and rebuild Black Rock all over again, and connect to the city's water system or the sewer system of the city with the development of Black Rock. It'd be just like any other development, it would have to submit through a process in which the city has established, which happens in this case to be the annexation process.
I want to know what Meredith's Medical Center intends to do with that parcel on the other side of Antietam Creek from Professional Court.
My understanding, that's going to become a storm management part.
A portion of it, at least.
The blue portion there.
Any portion of that parcel becomes developable, that is contiguous to the city, that requires annexation, which will require annexation of that whole entire chief property.
What I'm saying is, we do that now for properties that aren't directly adjacent. And in this case, this property, which is extending utilities, is not directly adjacent, but is within that area defined, that is required to go through that process. It's just a simple development process.
But it's their risk. Before they could turn on those utilities, connect them and get the water, they would have to deal with that requirement. That's a requirement of extending, of connecting our lines, at a minimum.
There's, there's no player in this game that isn't fully aware of that.
They're aware of that, I guess. They haven't approached us, to my knowledge.
What I'm saying is, we are being approached, and we are being asked, what should, what role should our staff play in this? And to me, that's role number one. That's step number one in the city's process, is step X.
Pre-annexation.
We're sort of already three steps into construction, and step one hasn't, hasn't been, hasn't been filed, hasn't been started.
I think we can approach this the other way around and still keep this moving. Don't forget, the, the money for design came from money the delegate Donahue obtained, from the state. So it's, right now, it's state money. It's, what, a million dollars? Is that million even, or roughly?
1,125,000.
Okay, 1,120,000, the delegate Donahue arranged for. And it, it provides for design. And that's a special state grant, because it's not a state highway. I don't see why, yeah, and, and everything that Lou said and Kristen said is of great concern. I totally agree. I don't see why, we have the design money, that that design can't proceed under state, at a minimum, state-required standards.
And it will.
It's my understanding, the state requires standards. And design it to whatever is logically needed for traffic flow, is best we understand it. Although Lou, Councilman Metzner has a very valid point. You know, I, I raised the backup question way back when we went ahead and did our part of Eastern, and it's happening. You know, it's backing up at Jefferson, which, you know, we all said it would. And this will exacerbate that. So, you know, that's another thing to be worked out. But there's so many things to be worked out. But I don't think we should delay money that's in hand, which will also, by the way, give us a much better idea of what, whomever pays for this, and I say whomever, what it's going to cost. But I don't think right now, we should decide, there's, there's too many of these questions about who's going to do what where, to, to try to say, the city's going to participate or not in the funding. I, I can't for one. And I have been a proponent of doing this project. It should have been done when the hospital was built. That's, but that's water over the dam. That's when it should have been done. But I can't proffer city money until I know that the city taxpayers are going to get something for their investment. And I don't see that, know what that is at the moment. And I don't see how we can know, or how we can know quickly, until questions like, you know, what's the tax status of these properties going to be? How soon are they going to develop? You know, what's the likely revenue to be received from them? And I realize the road provides a great safety benefit, you know, in terms of access to the hospital, a great traffic improvement. But that, the city didn't cause that. But that, the city didn't cause that mistake to be made. We did not make that mistake, and we should not be paying to rectify it. Now, we can participate, I think, if there are ways in which we can get value, you know, out of participating in this, we should try to find it. Either through annexation, through a guaranteed pilot program of some kind, any number of those. But there has to be a guarantee that we get revenues back beyond what the cost of doing, providing services out there is. The last thing I want to see is for us to get responsibility for the roads and other, police and fire there, and not get revenue back. And that's what I'm afraid of. But we can't, since we have the million dollars in hand, I don't think we should delay design to professional standards until we can resolve that.
You're right. And I think the question is being asked of us. I think our staff should participate in the design. I think that's one of the key questions that we're being asked tonight. Should our staff participate with county, state, and others in this continual design process? And my answer to that would be a resounding yes. I would also note, before we all start, you know, getting the entrenching tools out and digging the ditches across from the others, we had a meeting with hospital folks here and delegations not too long ago, and it was very astutely said that, you know, don't know how you guys negotiate, but generally, you get something for something, when we were told by hospital personnel how things work. So I would say this in agreement with Councilman Brubaker. First of all, that this can't be a one-way street figuratively, where the city is asked to contribute seven figures and gets nothing in return for it. I agree with Councilman Alshire that pre-annexation agreement needs to be done at some time. What I would say, however, that has not been said, we are addressing, essentially, we are reliving Hopewell Valley. We're, to a large degree. When Hopewell Valley problems started, we said to the county then, we don't have to annex if we have revenue sharing. But you can't tell us that we're going to give you all the utilities, we're going to give you all the services, and you're going to take all the taxes. Now, if they don't want annexation to take place, I heard that we don't believe in economic development, because we talked about annexation. I can give up annexation in this area.
Revenue sharing.
For something!
For something?
It was made clear to us by Mr. Ross that nobody gets something for nothing. And I'm willing to give up, I'm willing to negotiate anything. I'm willing to put...
How much are they paying for the bridge?
Annexation, I'm willing to put annexation on the table, I'm willing to put lots of things on the table. But what I'm not going to put on the table is the city getting stuck with a seven-figure bill and having nothing to show for it, except the backup on Eastern Boulevard to the dual highway, and a loss of money from us. And again, I want to reiterate, however, for those people out there that are freaked out about this annexation issue for this area, come to the table. If you don't want annexation, discuss with us how we do revenue sharing. Whether that means the county gives us a cut of the taxes, or where there's a separate pilot, so the county gets everything they want and the city gets something, or else it becomes very simple. Treat it like a developer, and they can pay for the entire professional court, Eastern Boulevard development, they can sign a pre-annexation agreement, and if they never become contiguous, we never annex, then everything's fine. I don't think that's the way people want to go, and I invite people to come to the table. I invite Chief to come to the table, the county commissioners to come to the table. Those are the players here, as I see it. For some reason, Meredith is brought into this, and I don't see...
They're a player because of that site, Lou. They're right there, if there is an annexation policy...
Having said that, I don't see where Meredith is a player here.
Because they own all of this.
Well, they're subject to a pre-annexation agreement, and they were when they went out there.
And that's what I'm saying, is if, I remember nothing else from Earner's comments, repeatedly, when we adopted the annexation policy, repeatedly, he said, you cannot have this policy in place and apply it to some properties sometime. This is your policy, you apply it to development as development occurs. To me, a development is occurring, and you apply your policy...
But the risk, Kristen, is it'll let this fallow for many, many years, not develop here, develop here, things go on here, and we never get, we never get anything back.
If construction of utilities is happening here, that policy should have already started its process. Because that's...
That's not clear to me.
That's like saying, you know what, you can get...
So you're saying the water line is going to run through that property?
You can get to construct...
Whether or not there's any construction going on or not.
That's like saying, you know what, we might make you do reforestation ordinance.
No, no, we control whether we connect to that property or not. And under our poli... No, we control the connection. So, you know, at a minimum, pre-annexation is her priority.
Are we reviewing those utility lines right now? The design of those utility lines, are we reviewing them right now?
I assume the utility department...
Just like we would review any other developments, utility lines. And there is no way, there is no way in any other single development that has come before our process that we get to step Y in the process without that occurring.
Because, well, I think there's a pretty clear direction that we need to get those pre-annexation agreements moved forward. We can continue discussions with Chief, or with the county commissioners, or anybody else that's a player in this, to make sure that the city's interests are well represented. I think that's abundantly clear.
Rodney, do you have what you need from us?
Yeah, I just want to be clear that I don't think the design is being held up by anything here. The design's moving forward, these gentlemen know exactly what they're doing there. It's just, I think this construction is two years away, and these things take time. And I just thought it would be good for us to start this conversation, and I appreciate your comments that you gave.
Yeah, but we can't make funding decisions without...
Right, no, I totally understand.
And they're not asking us right now whether, whether we have an interest in it being designed to city or county standards. That's not a question being asked of us right now.
The roads are going to be built to state standards.
All of them, or just the one that is being designed currently?
So the standards would be as high, if not higher.
Is that right? All of them?
The roads that are in the city would be designed to the state standard, the roads that are in the town, the bridges to the state standard. So everything you've said is accurate.
So Yale Drive, the one that's under construction now, is not being constructed under state standards?
No.
So the answer is...
Or city standards.
Right.
No, it's definitely not city.
Which means that we would not accept this road in the city if they build it the county standards and we annexed, then there's county...
I don't think we can say that.
I'm not sure that I could say that.
I think that would be part of a...
You know, our standards are sidewalks on both sides, streetlights, street trees, all those kind of things. Some of those things are present, some of them aren't.
We wouldn't want to give people sidewalks. I mean, that's just ridiculous. Look how many people have been killed on the dual highway because the county doesn't have urban growth standards for sidewalks and roads and streets.
Do we know whether sidewalks are planned in the county?
They're putting a multi-use path on one side, which I think is a reasonable address, way of addressing pedestrians, yeah.
Just to clarify in the short term, then, what Mayor and Council is saying is, good for Rodney to participate in the county and chief's meetings on the design, with the understanding that there's no city commitment of funding for upgrades, improvements to professional court in the city, the intersection improvements at Eastern, or any funding participation in the bridge. Right now, no funding.
We haven't denied them, we're just saying until there's an agreement.
In words, no commitments, yes.
No commitment.
And Rodney, I think that's the immediate question for you.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. City administrator comments.
I think I passed all mine to you, Mayor, so I'm going to pass in general. Thank you.
You bet. Who'd like to start? Mr. Metzner?
I hope everybody had a fine holiday season. I know I did. Raised a lot of interesting questions tonight. I would like to thank our discussion on the last topic, is a discussion of how we can all cooperate together to have a project that is going to be beneficial to everybody in this community and done in an appropriate manner, so it solves all of our problems. And I think that's the message that we need to send forth to the other stakeholders that are listening, is we are willing to sit down and discuss how to do this, but please don't just make assumptions. That's all.
Mr. Brubaker?
And a Happy New Year.
Yes, I want to emphasize that. Two, we're not sitting here trying to be obstacles, but we're sitting here trying to defend the citizens of Hagerstown and trying to develop a project here that works for the community at the same time. But we can't just automatically make assumptions for the... I've lobbied for this bridge many a time to try to get state money. Delegate Donahue came through with a piece. I don't know what's going to happen in the future. It's not on a state road. I do know one thing, because of a comment Kristen made, there's going to be, the whole corridor is going to be in the lobbying package, as I understand it, not just the bridge, not just professional court, to go down to Annapolis. The whole, the whole Eastern Boulevard corridor is in there. Now, what specific ask this county's going to try to make, the big obstacle there is the railroad crossing. Railroad crossing is hugely expensive. But it's still not an excuse. You know, we did our part a long time ago. So happy holidays to everybody. But Lou said it better than I did. I think we want to try to make something out of this that works for everybody, make it a win-win. And, but, one more thing I forgot to mention. In the list of question mark projects on the bonds, which ties back into things like this, I mean, how much money would we have anyhow for a project like this? The stadium, if we should, and we're not talking about it tonight, but that's another potential big chunk of capital investment, if even a small improvement to municipal stadium, even a small shared improvement would add significantly to this bond list. So, you know, it's one that needs to be on there as a potential, or an indoor rec center, but, you know, whatever, some kind of item like that we've talked about. So I think it needs to be on that question mark list.
Duly noted. Thank you. Ms. Nye?
Thanks to Eric Deike and the city for getting the clock fixed down where the Carson's building was. It's working, and when I looked up today, I also saw where High Rock is at, that clock is working. So thanks to Daughtry, that's a plus, too. It's just so nice to see them both in sync. I said, oh my, I can't believe it, both of them.
Everyone will be on time now.
Yeah, well, you know, it's just nice. And then also, I noticed that, and I have no idea who the owner is, but there's a new restaurant out at the Venice, and knowing that there was a lot of cars that were there the past, well, Saturday and Sunday, so I'm still trying to get a handle on it.
I heard it's good.
Well, it must be. But who has opened it? Again, it's like, okay.
There was something in the newspaper about it.
Don't get the newspaper, but all I can tell you is, is that it was, you know, it was full of life.
And just so folks know about the clocks on the clock tower of City Hall, that the staff is working with the North Side Clock Shop on parts and getting that fixed, just so folks know that we haven't forgotten that those ceiling lights clocks aren't working.
Oh, no, they have to, stay tuned. I know when it's happening, so. And also, 62 East Avenue, that place has been a mess. It's almost as bad as 71. There are at least six or seven bags of trash that are up against the porch. They continue to lie there. No one's going to move them. A recycle bin gets put out time to time, but the bags still are there. And I have a sneaking suspicion that it could be yard debris, because it is one eye sore and a half. If someone would just please look into that. And the blue trash cans, I'm going to be my own police. I'm tired of, I'm tired of seeing them on the street. If there's an opportunity for people to get them back into their yard along the side or wherever, you know, it's like up on Potomac, you will see that there's not openings on some, but there are openings on others, as well as everyone else. Now, it's gone out in the light bills, I believe, Light of Water, as far as please put them where. So now, I just continue to call and say, okay, what do we do next? I mean, we've been nice about it, but you know, appearance does mean everything. So, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Alshire?
Speaking of appearances, the Old Massey building, we can get an update on that at some point. Maybe not specifically that, the plywood on the back wall's starting to fall off, but not the first house, that's the old greenhouse, but the one beside it is, I could probably push the porch over at this point. There's two out of four columns missing, and all I want is a report on how soon we're going to be able to work with the county to tear them down.
How would we cite people? How do we cite anybody?
We shouldn't be citing anybody that has a piece of property that looks better than that one. And the second is this last issue in the annexation. Again, you know, there was a long process the city went through to simply have a process that every other municipality in this county and most municipalities in this state have. That's a very simple annexation policy. And, you know, I certainly don't want folks to use that as a scare tactic or a boogeyman, because it is an illusion. And if anyone doesn't think it's an illusion, try and remember Eastern Boulevard before it existed, and five years after it was built, almost every lot on that entire stretch, on every one of those cul-de-sacs, was sold, built on, developed. And I don't see...
It's not a deterrent to economic development.
It has not been a deterrent to any infrastructure we have built.
And I don't mean to step on your time, but the reason I would argue that we are in the fiscal situation that we are in is because this city gave away its water and sewer to all these developments outside the city for decades, and never required any kind of incorporation into the city, so that the city never benefited from those developments whatsoever. And we're still trying to dig our way out of that financial hole. There's a huge difference between being a partner and being a pawn. And I would also note, in talking with our city administrator recruiter today, this is not an issue anywhere else in America. People just understand that they live in the city, they pay city taxes, they pay county taxes. That's just a fact of life. Now, could we work on double taxation, as Councilmember Brubaker has so ardently done for so long? Yes, we can continue to work on that, and duplication of services and whatnot, but it is not a deterrent to economic development.
And by the way, 20, 25% of every dollar the county pays to build a road is paid by citizens of Hagerstown.
Right.
So if we contribute, it's a, it's a double whammy, like Edgewood now.
Anyway, I'm sorry, were you finished? Mr. Munson?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to wish everybody a Happy New Year, lots of luck, success, and progress in the new year. And I appreciate Marty raising the issue of the stadium, because that reminded me of a letter to the editor featured in a newspaper on the 16th of December. It was an open letter to the mayor of Hagerstown and Washington County citizens entitled, "Who's on First?", by a gentleman by the name of Doug Mills from Williamsport, Maryland, talking about the stadium and its value to the community, and reminding us that in that particular arena, we have a lot to do, but that's part of bettering our community.
And I hope the gentleman from Williamsport reminds his commissioners and his delegation to help us if we make such an undertaking.
Well, I hope, he will help us.
Well, there wasn't enough of that last time.
And that wasn't just a letter to the editor?
And I'm gone, I'm not saying to you, I'm just...
That was a full-page ad.
It was a full, yeah, it was a full letter, full-page ad.
Well, it certainly has been a busy new year so far. I just want to remind folks, the city administrator reminded me to remind folks that Christmas tree collection is underway this week, and so if you're in the northwest quadrant of the city yesterday and this evening, you can set out your trees...
the city yesterday and this evening, you can set out your trees. Tomorrow is the northeast quadrant of the city, Thursday is the southwest quadrant, and Friday is the southeast quadrant. Obviously, if they see them out, they're going to try to pick them up, but that's only going to last so long, so get them out as soon as possible, in other words.
Do you want to make it clear that the collection for northeast is tomorrow, the collection's tomorrow?
Collection's tomorrow.
Your tree needs to be out tonight.
Tonight, correct.
And for those other sectors likewise. So they need to be out the night before their collection day.
The other thing is, I want to...
By 7:00 in the morning, right, or something like that?
Mm-hmm. I do want to thank Heidi Voorhees for coming to Hagerstown. She works for Gov HR, we hired her as our city administrator recruiter. It is unbelievable to think that we have only six months left with Bruce Zimmerman here at the helm as the city administrator, and it'll be a quick six months, but I do think that it's a good process. She spent the last day interviewing department heads and members of the council and myself, and we'll be moving through that process pretty expeditiously over these next few months. The other thing is that the Hub City 100-miler kickoff that was scheduled for tomorrow is postponed, because if you were there last year, it was cold and windy. But apparently, tomorrow's going to be colder and windier, and I just got over being ill, and I don't want to endanger anyone's life, so thankfully, staff has rescheduled that for next Monday, January 12th, at 4:30 at Fairgrounds Park. So hopefully, folks will turn out, and it'll be a little less windy and a little warmer. The other thing that I wanted to do is thank Chief Holtzman for the work that he has done with the Department of Public Safety and Corrections. Prior to, just after our last meeting last year, we received an update that all the wardens and assistant wardens and case managers received to once again reiterate, and I'll just read it out loud, that effective immediately, only inmates with established Western Maryland home plans prior to incarceration will be approved for release to Western Maryland. These home plans must be verified and approved prior to release. In Hagerstown, the rescue mission, Reach Cold Weathers Shelter, Dagmar Hotel, Community Action Council are not viable home plans, and will not be approved as release plans. In Cumberland, et cetera, in Frederick, et cetera, inmates not originally from Western Maryland submitting Western Maryland home plans during their incarceration will be released back to the county where they were originally convicted in. Inmates convicted in Western Maryland but with home plans from other areas of the state when convicted will be released back to the county where their original address was from. This is a memo dated December 15th from Frank B. Bishop Jr., the acting regional executive director. So I just want to make sure that folks know, our chief is very on top of this issue, working on this concern that we have. I also want to thank him for giving us an update on the excessive use of city services program that we also received at the same time. In that memo that he related to us is that 23 properties or 6% receiving notice have been deemed a chronic nuisance, per the ordinance. Only seven properties or 2% have been assessed fees under the police department's enforcement of the overall ordinance. So I wanted to thank him for that update, and look forward to continuing to get those updates. And with that, we shall be adjourned. Thank you.